Where's my teleprompter? Where's my teleprompter? One about... I got it. This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications, Cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T, U-verse Channel 99. It's being recorded for future viewing. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website, www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Scott Gray. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting. If you're going to speak, please sign the sheet at the podium when you do so. Okay. Oral communications. Any additions or deletions? We've got a little switch around on the agenda besides that.
Yeah, staff has no changes, but we suggest reordering the two items on your agenda tonight.
Okay. And next is an opportunity for public comment on items that are not on the agenda, but we hope have something to do with our business. Hearing none. Any commissioner comments? And staff comments?
Staff has no comments.
Okay, then, moving on to the public hearings, we're going to take public hearing B first, and I'm going to recuse myself because of a property that's within 300 feet of the subject property. So Commissioner Westman will resign.
So we'll have a hearing on a sidewalk sign permit for Margaritaville Restaurant located at 231 Esplanade in the Central Village zoning district. And we'll have a staff report first, and then we'll hear from the applicant, and then anyone else in the public who would like to comment on this.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Before you this evening is a sidewalk sign permit, and we're bringing this before you because it's a little bit... We've got, as staff, questions about the criteria that this is reviewed under within the code. So this is a sidewalk sign permit within the Central Village located at 231 Esplanade. And the sign that is proposed is made of alderwood. There's a sample... The sign actually was produced by the owner. You can see it in front of you. It's alderwood. It's stained. In the center of the sign is a chalkboard, and then it'll be... The sign company will print the lettering on there for Margaritaville at the top. So within the sign code, the sign... The standards are that sidewalk signs must be consistent with the approved BIA design, and if they are, they can be issued as an over-the-counter permit by the Community Development Director. There are specific regulations within the code of where the sign must be located and allowing access along the sidewalk, and other standards such as all signs within... For the building have to be in compliance with the code at the time of application. There's also width. There's a maximum of 18 inches wide and 58 inches tall. Another standard is that they must be placed on a pole, and that pole can either be located on a movable stand or into one of the holes in the sidewalks that came out from the previous parking meters. So before you is... On this slide, I show you the BIA design, and the standard that is in question is standard number nine within the sign code that says that the sign must be consistent with the approved BIA design. So on the left, you see the BIA design example, and it has a unique shape to it. It's rectangular, but the top and bottom of it have a curve to it. The proposed sign is made of high-quality materials, the alderwood. It'll have the chalkboard that's also framed with alderwood. It'll be on a metal base, and... But it is not the exact cookie cutter shape as the BIA design. And then in reviewing our future code update, this was clarified a bit in the code in that we showed other alternatives to the BIA cookie cutter shape, and that there's an oval. But when this came up, we said we... To make sure that we're making the right decision in approving this sign, we'd like to bring it to the Planning Commission and make sure the intent was not that every sign be the same cookie cutter shape as the BIA design. So that is why we are here this evening. We rushed to put this one on this agenda because typically they are approved over the counter, and the applicant is here today, and I think it's... She's patient in waiting for our typical over-the-counter response. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this sidewalk sign based on subject to the conditions of approval and findings within the staff report. And that concludes my presentation this evening. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for the staff?
Yeah, I have a question. Yeah, thank you, Susan. What's the reason why they don't want to use the BIA-approved design?
When they were... My understanding is that in order to get the edge for this sign design, the way they would like it, that the craftsman that was working on the sign is unable to make that shape with the cut and the framing the way it is.
What are the dimensions of the proposed sign? I can't quite...
Oh, they're... They meet the 18 inches wide and 32 inches tall. Or it's... Yeah, and 58-inch max height. So it meets all the requirements of the BIA design in terms of height, a maximum of three square feet.
Okay. Can I have one?
Go ahead.
Just one final question, then I'll shut up.
Take your time.
Katie, you mentioned that you wasn't... You weren't sure if the Planning Commission or the council who had originally approved the BIA sign meant that every sign was to be a cookie cutter template. And... But could you speak to that? My recollection is that it was meant to be a cookie cutter template so that there was consistent and common design throughout the village. So...
That was my recollection here.
Yeah, I would almost defer to some of the commissioners who are here during those discussions. Unfortunately, they did predate my time and Katie's time with the city. Just a literal reading of the code, it didn't seem entirely clear, and we had discussions recently with the zoning code update about allowing additional design flexibility in terms of the shape of the sign, and that's why we, you know, utilized a section of code that talked about deviations from the design standards in the code shall be considered by the Planning Commission.
So did you... Did anyone contact the BIA and ask them their feelings about this?
I did not.
Because my recollection is the same as Commissioner Story's, because I was actually working here at that time. And, you know, we went to the council on several different occasions with proposed sign options, and there was a considerable amount of opposition to allowing any sidewalk signs at all. And finally, we were able to work with the BIA and come up with a design, and the council approved it with the idea that it would be consistent and that we wouldn't have these, you know, various signs all over... Various shapes and sizes of signs all over town. So my inclination is almost, and I don't know exactly how we do this, is, you know, it seems like this is a question that the council should answer since they were the ones that were so adamant about us having only one design. And, you know, my suggestion would be to contact the BIA, and I don't know if the Planning Commission needs to deny the sign so it can go to the council, or how you would like to have that happen.
I... Before we move to that sort of extreme position, I'd like to just throw in my two cents, and I wasn't as close to it as possibly you were, but it was my understanding that the sidewalk sign issue was a big issue because of all of the A-frames we had springing up all over town. And we had a large variation in the quality and the class, if you will, of the signs that were out there. And the efforts were very diligently worked to try and come up with a design that would be of the quality character of the village, so we wouldn't continue to have, you know, plastic signs and A-frames all over the place. And the overall design of the pedestal with a single double-sided... It was my understanding that that's the image and the quality of the character of the signs that we want. But I would hate to see a single allowable sign ruin the character of all of the independent businesses that we have. So I would like to see us take it the other direction and decide amongst ourselves if we believe that this is equally representative of the character, and then put that out. And if the BIA has objections... I don't see anyone here from the BIA speaking.
Right. I hear... I absolutely hear what you're saying, because I've thought about this one. And because I think it is a quality sign, I think it would be nice to be able to approve the sign. But I do think that the direction, you know, particularly from the people who were objecting to signs, sidewalk... Any sidewalk signs at all, and the compromise that was reached was that, yes, we could have sidewalk signs, but they would match this one design. And, you know, for me personally, and, you know, I'm only one vote, it's my belief that clearly that's what they did, and I wouldn't mind seeing the council change that position. But, you know, my recollection is that was pretty clearly their position at the time.
I would concur. It was a pretty hot topic through the village, and we, as a planning commission, never did address this issue. It was a city council issue with the BIA. And... But I do have one concern that I hear from people in the village or business owners, and I'm sure the people that are here tonight, folks here from Margaritaville, is that it's an extremely costly sign to buy, and I think that there needs to be alternatives to that process, allow people to take care of it themselves. I don't... I mean, I don't... I think it probably fits the, you know, the intent of looking professional, looking nice, not just some A-frame that's out there. I don't know about the... I see the base is a little bit different, and I think they had concerns about tripping hazards and stuff like that. So, I mean, I could take a stab, and I don't know if we could maybe do a temporary approval until they get some other opinion on it. But I know between the BIA and the city council is a pretty political topic that we weren't privy of that whole process, other than hearsay. So I don't know if I'm in a position really to approve something that would cause them a lot of heartache and concern. They spent a considerable amount of time, I know, discussing it, but I would like to see an alternative, allow the business owner to not have to buy one from the company that cost... I was like $1,500 or something crazy. I don't know, it was a stupid amount of money for these things.
Well, if we believe that, then the picture should be in the code.
If I can elaborate on that? So this picture has been in the code, and it has been reviewed by the Planning Commission prior and the city council. So I think the direction of the code has been to allow different shapes, just for the fact that this has been in the draft code throughout last year's review and the present draft that you have now. So in terms of this not being reviewed by the city council at any level, I think they have reviewed this image within the draft code, and it's never been brought up as an issue within our meetings.
So, well, I guess my concern would be the base on it, because I don't know if that was some form of discussion about things that caused tripping hazards out there that they were concerned about.
Yeah, we should give the applicant an opportunity to speak to us.
Well, I guess I should sign this. Can I speak?
Do you remember where it is in the code? Where signs move to?
I'll find it.
17.8.
The base met the... Actually, it was... It was less than the requirement, and I'm going to have to look through my notes to see what the requirement was, but it couldn't be any wider than...
18 inches.
Oh, 18 inches, and it's not that wide. It's made out of cast iron.
Okay.
It's actually... The reason we started on it was I understood that the sign that you have approved there that says "Welcome to Capitola," that that cost $2,000 to make. And I talked to my neighbor who was a master craftsman, and he said, "Well, I could make a sign for a lot less than that." And I said, "Well, I have a base. It's a table base, and it's made out of cast iron." And so we talked about it, and he did this design here, and, you know, I don't know what else to tell you about the base. The base is within 18 inches. It's not 18 inches wide. It's less than that. So...
Does the base have individual legs, or is it a perfect circle?
It's a three-prong.
It is three-pronged.
Do any of those prongs extend outside of the dimensions?
No, it's a table base, and it's just... It's less than 18 inches. And we followed everything, all the dimensions to the T.
I mean, you know, my dilemma is I really think this is a nice sign. I just feel that, you know, sort of the commitment that was made on sidewalk signs at the time that the city decided to have a program was very clear that, you know, they were supposed to be consistent, and if we don't want them to be consistent, that's fine with me, and I'd like to see in the new code that there is room in there for different kinds of designs that meet the, you know, criteria. But I'm just... For me, but... Somebody else? Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, well, if I may. Yeah, I guess I am concerned that we are... Granted, the exception may actually set the policy. When the policy in the zoning code in section 17.80-8, number four, it says sidewalk signs consistent with these standards and as illustrated in 1780-3 can be issued as an over-the-counter sign permit by the Community Development Director. And the "as illustrated" are the two signs in the future code on the right there. I assume that in the old code, it was probably the BIA design. So trying to hit a moving target... I mean, so it seems like that what's being requested here is a variance from the code.
It's technically not a variance, because the sign code... The existing sign code does allow the Planning Commission to approve exceptions to sign standards.
And when I read the code, I saw that it can be an easy peasy, and in our new code, we've done a lot of places where we've said, "If you do exactly what we want, then you can get it administratively issued." That saves a lot of time, a lot of energy. But if you don't do exactly what we want, then it comes to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission has the duty, I think, to review it and say, "Hey, does this meet the character and quality of what we want in the village?" And if it does, then I think that we're... We should approve it, and if someone has an issue with it, if the BIA has an issue, or if it gets appealed to council, that's outside of our jurisdiction, if you will. But I would just, to see if I can get a second, throw that out there, that this sign meets the concept. So the illustration are sidewalk sign standards and design concepts, which in my mind, it's the pedestal. It's the single two-sided sign. It's not another, you know, another design of the basic functional sign that we're looking at. It's cosmetically different, which means that staff could not approve it on their own. But when I look at it, especially since the materials are here, it appears to me to be the quality that we want in the village, and it's not any bigger or, you know, it's not a strange trapezoidal thing or something. I would move that we approve it.
Yeah, I think the future code is vague enough. It leaves a room to do that. I just know there's a lot of discussion, but I'm not opposed to proving. If somebody wants to appeal and say it doesn't work, then I guess they have that right down the road. But, you know, obviously, it's nice workmanship. I think it would be a... It's nice that the owners have the ability to not have to purchase this, you know, outrageously priced sign from the original builder. And that, I just hate to see us handcuff people to that original sign. So when reading the future code, I don't see anything where the stand says, other than it can be in a hole or it can be in a movable stand. So there's nothing... I mean, when you look at the designs, it's not painted wide, and it doesn't have the round base, but the future code doesn't really dictate that, so...
So are you seconding?
Yeah, I think... I'll go ahead and go for a second, and then we'll go from there.
Well, I heard the concept about approving this because it's consistent with the design envisioned, and... But what are those standards? So if we have the second and third merchant coming forward with now their own signs, they all look nice. All these signs look nice, okay? And maybe they're less costly, but that's going to happen over and over again. On what basis are we going to decide which is acceptable and which is not? It seemed like to me that we're going down the path that as long as it's within the dimensions... And I'm not sure about the base. I, you know, recall that... I mean, they had that flat disc, so there wasn't as much things for people to trip over. But so that design aspect of it, I'm just not sure where we're going to be going with this if we approve this particular sign.
At least from staff's perspective, how we would handle it, if somebody came in with a design that mirrored the BIA design, we'd approve it over the counter. If it was something that deviated from that, like this application for you tonight, I think we'd bring it back to the Planning Commission, say it doesn't meet this standard, so the only way to approve it would be for the Planning Commission to approve a deviation from the standards as allowed in the code.
Right. But what criteria do we use? Okay. Is it just, well, everyone that seems reasonable gets approved? Because... So that's my difficulty, you know, with making this...
No, I understand. Well, and there's nothing about... In the future code about the base. So if that's something that is that strongly held to the BIA and the city council, then maybe it should be spelled out in the code.
In my mind, it's the materials and the concept. Does it look similar? I mean, doesn't have to have the exact angles, doesn't have to be the exact same stuff, but does it look similar to what we've approved? And conceptually, is it the same thing? It doesn't have two legs? Doesn't have three legs? It has one single leg?
And just as with this sign, I don't think there's any criteria that someone has to go to one person and have the sign made by that one person at that cost. I mean, it was more that, you know, I mean, you could go to anyone who makes signs. It was the shape and the base and the heights that they were concerned about. There was never anything about you have to go to this person and spend $2,000 on the sign.
They've already allowed a deviation from the bottom of the base, right? I think it's more the pedestal that they were more concerned about than the actual base, because you can put it into the sidewalk.
Right, you can put in a hole.
So do we need to vote on our motion? May I ask, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, we should.
Want to do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Westman?
No.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
That's an automatic appeal?
So that would be a denial unless the Planning Commission wants to try a different motion.
Well, I would make a motion if they were willing to do it to continue this item to our next meeting. And if they could get, you know, a letter from the BIA saying that they don't have any issues with changing the sign design, and perhaps, you know, we could let the council members know that, you know, this item's going to be coming up on our agenda, and if they don't... If no one has any problems with it, then at the next meeting, I would be more than willing to approve the sign. So I don't know if I can make that motion, but...
Well, just to piggyback off of that, Commissioner, why not just take this to the council?
I think we could explore that. I may want to confer with the city attorney in terms of how mechanically that works. I would have no problem bringing it to the council. It's not clear in the code that there's a mechanism to do that, but it might be perfectly appropriate. I'm just not sure.
Right. Well, I mean, it would seem to me within the context of now, we're looking at the zoning signage as part of it. We have this kind of prescriptive language in it. Does that... Does the council at this point want to reconsider?
I mean, the Planning Commission might have the authority to refer a matter to the city council. I'm just frankly not aware of it.
Well, if it's a denial, don't the owners have a right to appeal to the city council?
Right. Not an expense.
Oh, I see, yeah.
But for something like this, I'd rather just refer it.
No, I agree, yeah, not an expense.
Yeah, I mean, if we could maybe just refer it without having them incur that expense.
Perhaps a motion could be something like Commissioner Westman said with an add-on that staff can discuss with the city attorney if a Planning Commission referral to the city council is okay, and if so, we'll take it that route. And if not, we'll bring it back to you in a couple weeks.
Okay. Also, I mean, I'll move that.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With a comment, I think it's ridiculous to have the council have to approve every sidewalk sign in the future. I think that's nuts.
Well, I don't think this is about every sidewalk sign. I think it is about what criteria and standards they want to, you know, tell us that we should apply, and if they want to modify the zoning code accordingly so that it doesn't have these prescriptive templates in it, or it says these are just examples, and the Planning Commission has the authority to approve anything that's, you know, within the zone. So I'm not... I don't think that motion was meant that every single sign application that's different goes to the council.
Then I'll take my comments back to the zoning code discussion then.
All right.
So I'm done.
You're done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perhaps we could give them a little help? Okay, thank you, Commissioner. The next...
Okay, thank you, Commission. The next item before us is the updated draft code.
So dropping back to item A on the public hearings, everybody's favorite ongoing subject of the zoning code update. Staff?
Thank you. Before you this evening is our continued discussion on the zoning code update. On January 9th, 2017, an updated code was released. There are copies of the code available at City Hall, also at the library and online on our website. Along with the zoning code update, we published the remaining zoning code issues paper, and that outlines nine topics that during the zoning code update, we received direction on items. We wanted to make sure that we got that direction correct, or we identified possible issues within the direction, so we were bringing them back for further discussion. During our last Planning Commission meeting, we went over the zoning code map and the TRO boundary and received direction on those two topics. This evening, we're gonna start on topic number two, height exception in the mixed-use village. And I have slides ready for all the remaining items. We'll see how far we get this evening and jump into the conversation. So
The processes that will take these one at a time, and then presentation, commission discussion, topic by topic.
Yep.
That work?
And then at the end of my presentation, I also have additional slides from emails that came in from different planning commissioners that wanted a discussion on certain items.
So if they're, if they have to do, for example, with the first topic, we should probably get them
I did integrate the ones that were appropriate under the topics, so. And that only occurred on the ninth item, so it worked out perfectly. So first, the height exceptions in the mixed-use village. Within our mixed-use village, the, the zone height is 27 feet. This is section 17.20 in the zoning code and page 20-5. The Planning Commission, upon review of the zoning code, allowed an exception up to 30 feet for habitable space with a roof pitch of at least 512. And then also added to that were the projections that are allowed citywide. When the City Council reviewed the, the updated code, they modified the language, so they kept the up to 30 feet for structures with a minimum 512 roof pitch. They also kept the projections of non-habitable decorative features and structures that are allowed citywide, but then they added up to 33 feet for a pitched roof with a maximum plate height of 26 feet and no habitable space above the plate line. So I have some images of what this would look like. When staff reviewed this update to the code, the exceptions of 30 feet for a pitched roof, and then the third exception for 33 feet with a minimum, with also a plate height of 26, and then no habitable space above, it is almost in conflict because it would require a pitched roof regardless, so to have 30 and 33 was confusing. So the major points for the exception within the mixed-use village are, one, there's gonna be a maximum height, and that varies in the recommendation from 30 to 33 feet. There was a request for a minimum roof pitch of 512, and I have some images of what that looks like. Maximum wall plate of 26 feet. And also, during the discussion of adding non-habitable space, that was during the City Council discussion, there was concern for too many windows and skylights and possible doors exiting from the roof structure, making it less of a decorative feature, but more of a functioning feature for habitable space. So I think that is why the habitable space requirement is in there. So in looking at those, we've tried to come up with a solution. And one solution that we can look at tonight is the exception for up to 33 feet for a gabled or hipped roof with a minimum 512 roof pitch and a maximum plate height of 26 feet. So this has the incorporates the designs of a gabled or a hipped roof. It has a 512 pitch, and that the maximum plate would also be 26 feet. And then added that there should be no breaks in the roof slope for dormers, windows, doors, or decks. So that's to keep the habitable space out of those areas, although not to, to keep the design from changing due to people living in that space. Habitable space was also a concern of staff's in terms of code enforcement over time. If people were to put in an extra living space up top, and you couldn't see it from the exterior, does it really impact the height of a building? So but whether or not if we'd be going into these structures and finding that they've transformed that area to habitable space would be hard to keep up with when you can't see what's happening inside. So here's a slide that shows roof pitches. And the third slide, third image to the, in the top right, is the 512 pitch. So it would be 512 pitch or greater, so greater than 512 is shown on the lower half of the slide. And within the alternative, this is how it would work. So there's the 27-foot zone height at the red level. The 26-foot max plate height is shown, and then there'd be a minimum 512 pitch for the roof, and it could go up to 33 feet. And what this looks like in terms of stories is that the first story, you could have a three-story building within the village. The first story could be at 11 feet. There are floodplain regulations, so your first story will have to be higher than the typical 10-foot or 8-foot level. And then you could have a second story at 9 feet with one foot of that 9 foot would be for the actual floorboards between the second and third story. And then you could have an additional 6 feet of height, and then from there, your roof would start sloping up. So it wouldn't, it would appear as a two-and-a-half-story building from the outside. The Public Works Department has a 25-foot measuring device that Ryan and I went around the village, and we took some measurements. So in these next images, where you see the red dashed line, that is the, and you can see Ryan at the bottom holding, that is our 25-foot height. So in each of these images, the red dash line is 25 feet. And we wanted to give you some examples of what are the conditions out in the village. So this image is along Capitola Avenue, and you can see that in this building, it's a 20-foot top of wall. And then the height of the building is at 27 feet. There's a falls front at the top of this building, and it's a two-story. Next is along the Esplanade, this is the apartment building next to the Six Sisters. Again, the height of the measurement is 25 feet for the red dash line. And this building is at approximately 27 feet. You can see the features. I'm not sure if that's an elevator that is a little bit higher on the left-hand side of the photo. Next is Six Sisters. The top of wall for Six Sisters is at 18 feet. And based on the ruler, or the measuring device, we estimate that the top of the ridge is at 27 feet. So again, that's within the zone height. This is a building on San Jose. It's a more recent infill project that again, you can see the 25-foot measurement in this building is at 27 feet, and they were able to put three stories within this residential building. This is the Superintendent Building on, at 201 Monterey. Here, the top of the wall plate is at 22 feet. And the ridge, I estimate, is at 33 to possibly 34 feet out in the field. So you can see, in this image, I'm gonna show you what a 27, 26 top of wall would look like. That's our estimate, is one foot above that red. Would be the new allowed top of wall, so the Superintendent Building, the actual wall height could go up four feet. And then you would have to have the 512 minimum pitch on top of it. And here is looking from another angle from Capitola. Again, you can see the 33-foot height. And the current top of wall at 22 feet, and the new allowance would be to have the top of wall up to 26 feet, which is four feet higher. So in this slide, I have the comparison of what the Planning Commission recommendation was, how the City Council changed that recommendation to add a top of wall with a pitched roof. And an alternative for habitable space to say that there can be no breaks in the roof slope for dormers, windows, doors, or decks. And I, I want to go back to the previous two slides, we're gonna talk about no breaks in the roof slopes and dorms, so that you can see how that would affect the Superintendent Building. So here, on that, in the third, I guess the second and a half story, that window would not have been allowed on the third story. And then on this facade also, that regulation wouldn't allow this window on the third floor.
Would it allow the little roof on the front architecturally? Or not?
It would from
Up front, maybe?
It wouldn't, would it?
Well, I think that little roof would be an architectural element, and it would fall under the citywide exceptions, rather than the exception for that zone, but and we'll get into that.
Yes or no?
Yes, under the zone height exceptions. So, or the citywide exceptions. So this is the three alternatives at this point. We can modify, but at this, and we'll take any suggestions to the City Council.
Before we get into questions and then comments, in terms of process, so the Planning Commission made a recommendation, the City Council changed the recommendation. The staff is coming back with the City Council's recommended, changed recommendation and revising that a little bit. What is our role?
Your role is to review the City Council recommendation and see if you think there are problems with the recommendation. The specific problem that staff has is the 30 to 33 feet would be the major. And then to either
Well, I have a problem because it doesn't make any sense to talk about habitable space if you have a, I mean, you have a plate at 26 feet, and then sort of the last four feet of the air spaces in a room is habitable space, I guess, if you're jumping up and down. I mean,
Yeah, that was, that was one of the concerns that staff had, for, for two reasons. One, I think it, it limits a developer's ability to add architectural design to it. And then secondarily, as Katie mentioned, just the enforcement of it. I think over time, they will be used as habitable space, and it's nearly impossible to monitor, so.
You're thinking in terms of someone putting a loft there, but if it's just part of the room,
Faulted ceiling.
It's already habitable space.
Sure.
How is it not habitable when you're in a room and you say, okay, above so many feet, it's not habitable?
And only have short people in the room.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I don't think that there should be the no habitable space above the plate line included, because that just doesn't make any sense. And for me, I was trying to figure out, you know, no breaks in the roof slope for dormers, windows. You know, I, I don't know if I want to do that, because you're really limiting what someone could do. We're gonna say it can be, you know, as long as the roof is pitched, do, we could, you know, lower the plate height slightly if we thought it was a problem. But, you know, I could live with the 33 feet, the 5 and 12 pitch, and you know, if we want to put something that the dormers and windows and deck, I, we don't want decks.
No doors or decks.
No doors or decks, but they could have dormers or windows.
Yeah, I, I'm really excited about this. This is, I, I think this is the right move for the village, and I think we get rid of the habitable space limitation. And I think we're gonna see some nice creative buildings that fit in, and I really want to thank Katie for the presentation and Ryan for the little story pool. Because I think it really shows what the design can be like with the wall plate height allowing the, the peak ceiling. But allow them to put dormers in there for lighting, and it's just, it adds a lot of, I think, not only just for aesthetics, but it can allow, you know, purposeful lighting into rooms and stuff, so I'm excited about it. This is the most exciting thing I'm about in the whole, in the whole zoning code, is this thing right here.
So could you live with eliminating doors and decks?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. No, I, I just think the dormers and, and light, to allow lighting in, it's just features that make it aesthetically more pleasing.
So we're just recommending that the last sentence of the alternative recommendation be changed so that reads, there shall be no breaks in the roof slope for doors and decks?
Yeah, there should just be no doors and decks. That would be my recommend.
Seems to be a consensus.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good sample.
Well, well, almost, almost. Thank, thank you. And I guess, you know, maybe, I assume that the purpose of allowing the increased height is, is to gain more architectural interest down in the village, and and I, I think that's good. I get that. But when we went, the council went to 30 feet with the pitched roof. But, and then they added 33, but that was for just architectural features only? It was, is that my understanding of it? And, but now we're going all the way to 33, what, just based on the pitched roof scale?
So the City Council allowed the 30 feet with the 512 roof pitch. And then 33 feet with the added caveat that there, there's a maximum wall height of 26 feet, and to, to work backwards from 30 feet with a 512 roof pitch, you're most likely, your wall plate's gonna be at a, about 26 feet regardless. So that's where it doesn't really work, is for, to get, gain that pitch at 30 feet, you might even have wall plates that are lower. So it just functionally didn't work
Right.
in geometry, so, yeah.
Too bad the council didn't catch that. Could you remind me the, you know, the, the structure on the Stockton Bridge, the lighthouse building? What's the height of that?
So the height of that, I looked at it today. It is at the midpoint of the lighthouse feature, at the midpoint of the windows, it's at 27 feet. But the actual top of the peak of the lighthouse, I want to say, is at 31 feet and a couple inches.
Okay, so
That was an exception for mechanical equipment.
Right, yeah, that was a variance, which was approved, and yeah, an exception to the height limit.
Exception, not variance.
Which, and I, and I think that that was, that was a very positive exception. It's, it's a nice, attractive-looking building, and I hope that's the sort of, sort of construction that we're encouraging here. But variances in the future, how will that play into this? Are we going to basically have height inflation with coming in at 33? We need a variance now for this feature or for this roof type?
We are gonna talk a little bit more about some of the discussions we have with the City Council about projections and additional height. We want to clarify, is that in addition to the maximum? We think we need to clarify that a bit. But otherwise, I think the process for variances would be as they are today. They're relatively difficult findings, particularly in the village. You know, most of the lots are uniform for the most part, so I think by and large, unless there's something really unusual, staff at least would be recommending that variance findings can't be made.
Okay. Well, I would certainly want to see that, that there are strict limitations on granting variances down in the village to now these new proposed height standards.
There are supposed to be strict limitations, that's, the Planning Commission needs to hold the line.
Right, well
An example of a building that
But it's just that, you know, it's people like us, and, you know, and who knows where, where the future, I think unless it's somehow written into the code, you could have that potential of, of, you know, height creep.
And I think there may be some exceptions to projections for exhaust systems for, you know, whether it's a furnace system or a stove or something like that. Sometimes they have to have so many feet away from it, so there may be something like that.
So if you go to page 48-2 in your zoning code, that's where the list of
The projections?
Projections that are allowed citywide to go beyond the, the zone height.
But I think that's why City Council really wanted to set that wall plate.
48-2?
I'm sorry, 48-. I'm sorry, 48 dash two.
Forty-eight.
The, the, the plate height at 26 feet, so it's specified. So if the roof pitch is different than that, you, you don't wind up with the creep by adding 10% of the roof area on top of the 33 feet. I think that's one of the reasons that that got thrown in there.
So I'm going to now go into this, the next part of the height discussion and this starts on page 48 dash two and it's the citywide height exception. So the, the table that you see, a table 17.48 dash one outlines exactly what structures are allowed above the height limit. So the first one, non-habitable decorative features, including spires, belfries, copulas, domes and other similar architectural elements. Those would be allowed to project three feet over the zone height within the R1 and six feet elsewhere. Within this table, it wasn't very clear if this, if these are measured from the actual zone height or in the situation in the central village where there is a height exception allowed, that could you put your decorative feature above and beyond, you know, with your height exception and then your decorative feature on top. So this was one thing we wanted to clarify within the code. So first I'll run you through an example. Here again is our building with the maximum of 33 feet, the 26 foot plate height, 33 foot max height in the central village. There's an exception for chimneys that they can go up to six feet in height. So we've modified the language in the code to allow a chimney to project six feet from the maximum zone height and specify that. So if, if an applicant were to come in and say, well, I want my chimney to be at the very peak where the max height exception is measured, that would then be denied because of the change of the language. So.
Okay, so they, they, they won't be allowed to basically piggyback on other exceptions to basically raise that potentially to 39 feet?
Correct. So within the new, the, the staff edit was to add, these exceptions are measured from the maximum permitted zoning district height. They are not measured from the increased height allowance allowed within specific zoning districts.
So my, and the concept, I'm fully behind the concept. I think the wording needs to be revised. And we can talk about that, but I, I think it needs to be wordsmithed, the way it reads. First of all, you've got allow, you've got the words allowance and allowed right next to each other. There are other, and if you want, I'm confident that you can come up with a better phrasing of that.
I agree, but I'm comfortable with the concept. Great, makes sense to me.
Absolutely.
Onward.
Onward. Land use changes in the regional commercial district. So this is on page 24 dash two. Within your land use table for the community commercial and the regional commercial district. So just a reminder, community commercial district will be along 41st Avenue, south of Capitola Road, and then regional commercial is north of Capitola Road. And it's also located along Bay Avenue. Nob Hill area is community commercial. So the city council changes that were made were, one, to expressly prohibit single family dwellings in the CC and CR zones. So we added that as a land use type and then placed the dash in there to prohibit. Next, they asked us to prohibit multifamily dwellings in the regional commercial. So that has been changed from a conditional use permit that had specific criteria related to mixed use that has been removed and now it's expressly prohibited.
So I have concerns about that because we're talking about not allowing any residential, for example, on the mall property if this stays in effect.
Except for the mall property? Does that stand out or is it?
No, this, this would not allow, like, you know, if the Capitola Mall wanted to redevelop and part of their redevelopment, they wanted to have some kind of mixed use residential as part of that, this would prohibit that. And I, I don't think that's what we want to do.
Just to clarify, so the third change that they made within the regional commercial was they would allow residential as a mixed use, but it could not be a single, single building with just multifamily. So the first story would be prohibited from being residential.
I agree with Commissioner Westman that the, the example that is always cited when we start moving toward redevelopment is Santana Row. This requirement would prohibit Santana Row as it now exists.
Not, not the way with that last issue though, because only, because Santana Row doesn't have residential on the first floor, right?
Oh, yes, it does.
It does. There's some areas where there's residential on the first floor.
So I'm going to get to this with the second one too about offices and so forth. But the problem with what the city council was trying to do is that it's way too restrictive, way too prescriptive, way too confident about the future. We had a really nice, a cogent presentation by Doug Kaplan during the process. You might remember how he said, you know, we really don't know. When they had bought that building down there across from the Nob Hill Center, they had this great commercial building and now they can't rent it for commercial because the world has changed. And when we start passing zoning codes that are based on very, very narrow restrictive interpretations of what we think is just right today, we are guaranteeing that we're going to be out of, we're, we're binding ourselves. I mean, no one knows what the autonomous vehicles, which I brought up before and so forth are going to bring in the next 20, 10, 30 years. I, I just, I can't, I don't, I don't get the idea at all of having such a narrow vision for this zoning area.
I think those are very good points. I think that's one of the reasons staff wanted to talk about this a little more. I would point out that, you know, if the mall site itself redevelops as we anticipate that it will, there's probably going to be some, you know, development agreement or specific plan that'll override the zoning code. That's not my primary concern, but I think the same concept applies to other sites in the regional commercial area.
Great, and I've always expressed the viewpoint that, I think that mixed use is not necessarily, it's retail on the bottom and residential up above. I think mixed use can be a retail project next to a residential project, next to a retail project. And I agree with Commissioner, the Commissioner that, you know, I don't know that we want to be quite that restrictive. I know their concern seems to be from listening to them that the CR district produces most of the revenue for the city through retail activity. So having things like residential and doctors' offices is viewed as a problem. But we don't know, that may be, you know, I mean, I always felt that if Kaiser had come in and put a facility, you know, on 41st Avenue, it would have been a lot, done a lot to improve the retail businesses that were around there. So I don't, I don't want to be quite as restrictive.
Yeah, I, I can buy into your concepts. I appreciate the insight. I, I totally can agree with you. Give them some flexibility. It doesn't take away from us taking a closer look at a project when it comes through, but I like.
Make them get a conditional use permit.
I like the flexibility.
More restricted process, but don't prohibit them.
I, I could agree with that.
Any comments on the south end here?
No, I, I think I agree with those comments instead of, you know, boxing ourselves and trying to maintain some flexibility and for the developers as well. And like Ed said, who knows where the future is going. So, so I agree with that.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith?
I could go either way. I mean, I know we don't want a, a big apartment building down there and we really don't, but if we allow it, then how do you, if somebody brings in a, a big development for an apartment building or a senior living, you know, residential community, how, how do you then look at that project reasonably?
You know, I think the original draft code did call for an allowance for residential uses with a conditional use permit. I think we could easily write in a finding that the planning commission would need to determine that it was not impairing, you know, the retail, I don't know, market or, or whatever along the regional commercial area that.
Well, we've got competing policies here. I mean, we have housing policies too. So who knows when a project like that comes along, whether the housing policy trumps the sales tax policy or what?
I agree.
So from a process perspective, if it, if council changed it and did it this way and I don't hear us coming up with anything different than we came up with originally? Do we just want to go back to council and say, you know?
A little more insight on the council discussion is the previous code. If you look at page 24 dash three, under note number five that was crossed out, there was a limit of, residential uses on the site are limited to less than 50% of the floor or of the buildings on the site. So that was where this came from, was their concern of limiting residential to 50% of the buildings on the site. And then they, the conversation evolved into, well, we really don't want it on the first story. But, so we could go back to council and say there's concern for note number seven. It does require a conditional use permit, a multifamily dwelling, and we could put in some type of language for preference that it be located on the second and third, you know, above the first level, but within the conditional use permit, it be reviewed.
I don't even think we should put in the preference. I think the fact that there is a conditional use permit requirement will give us the maximum flexibility into the future.
And there's also, I think, very clear statements in the general plan that it's a priority for the city to maintain its retail base on 41st Avenue. So short of anything in the zoning code, I think we could always fall back on that if somebody came in and wanted to redevelop the whole mall site with residential.
Or the whole mall site is a medical office.
Sure.
Anything further?
Just, you know, one question. How, how's this fit in with the affordable housing overlay? Is that implied in that?
There's no effect. The affordable housing overlay only applies to two properties in the city. The one is Quality Inn site and the other 600 Park Avenue. By allowing multifamily residential, though, there might be opportunities to meet future regional housing needs. You know, open up some opportunities for us down the road.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Chair, just to make sure that I'm clear on the direction on, on this one. So looking at this table on the screen with multifamily dwellings is, is, which is a purely residential project on a parcel, no other uses, is your recommendation to have it as originally drafted with a conditional use permit and a limit on the?
Yes.
Okay. And then to eliminate, eliminate note seven under residential mixed use?
Correct. Everyone okay with that, Ken? All right, did we already start five or is that?
We're going to head into topic number five. So topic five is office uses in the regional commercial. This is on page 24 dash four. So when you're in the land use table, it tells you to go to this table for office Within the office for, for the table, the changes that were made were to prohibit office uses in the regional commercial on the ground level. Also to any, so what this would do is any established office buildings north of Capitola Road in the regional commercial would become legal non-conforming. And under legal non-conforming, if a, a space is vacant for up to 90 consecutive days, the use is not allowed to be reestablished. So it must be replaced with a use that is allowed within the land use table. So within our office buildings, as vacancies came up, if there was a suite that was vacant for more than 90 days, it could not be replaced with a office use. There's, we have concerns about that, you know, reviewing the code and we thought maybe it would be practical to take it with, for the whole structure, apply this. So the office use in an existing office building would create an allowance that as long as the office building is exclusively used for office space, it be allowed to continue until such time that the office building is redeveloped or removed. So that was our suggestion.
My comments are that the concern I think is really valid because when I read this, I thought, oh, this is a recipe to create your own blighted area. And I can see it already there. So, yeah, you're pretty close. I don't, I don't think that eliminating it altogether is a wise move at all. But the second part of that, and since we've just talked about the upper floors versus lower floors in the rest of the complex, what if we got really creative and found a way to recruit some large tech farm type employer that, that would come and develop a live work area? We've got the perfect region for it and there would be all manner of economic benefits to us to bringing that in. So between the two, you're, you're sort of shooting yourself in the foot with any of those possibilities.
So this is sort of the same point as the last one, really. I mean, we're talking about the direction that economic trends are going and one, we know that retail is, is a dying industry with Amazon and so forth. And so the, the idea of, it's nice that retail creates sales tax, but we need to rethink our taxing system rather than try and fill up spaces with retail shops that are going to fail. When, again, I use the example of the, the store, it was, I think it was a children's bookstore or whatever.
Kaleidoscope.
Kaleidoscope, yeah. The kaleidoscope site is a perfect example. I mean, they tried to re-rent that for retail and it ended up being a real estate office because that's what's happening now. And who knows what'll be happening in 10 years. But to try to force retail when it's not happening economically is, is just not a good strategy.
So could we go back to our original recommendation, which was they could be there, but they needed a conditional use permit?
I, I mean, to me, that gives us all the flexibility.
Yeah, I like that.
Possibly want.
Okay. We, we would suggest keeping the, that first conversion of retail use to an office in, on the table, keeping that crossed off because that would mean every conversion would have to come. Conversion of retail use to an office use would require a conditional use permit within the zoning district and that's just repetitive of first floor that would need a conditional use. So we would suggest keeping that to delete that first line in the table. And then.
So let me make certain, I understand. So what you're saying is the conversion of retail space to office use that's not on the first floor or?
So it's, it's kind of redundant in the way it's written. Any ground floor that's less than 5,000 square feet, the suggestion that I'm hearing is in the regional commercials to allow, is to require a conditional use permit. So by listing conversions of retail uses to an office use, it already requires a conditional use permit. So it, it just really shouldn't have been in the table to begin with.
Okay. I get it now.
Anything else on topic five? Okay. Go on to Coastal Commission.
I actually have one more question regarding that table and I apologize for not having a slide of that table. But on the last item in the table at the bottom, it says located within multi-tenant site in which the office space is not located within a storefront and a setback from the front facade. Previously, that was a permitted use. Would you like to see that changed to conditional use permit within your recommendation to city council or to mean, so that all first floor?
I think it should be permitted, like it, I can give them the flexibility. If they want to have an office in the middle of the building where it's not on the front facade.
Yeah.
Why should they not?
I'm okay with that.
Can't get the way it is.
Okay.
Okay, next is the coastal commission edits. So during your initial review of the coastal commission edits, there was no definitive recommendation to the planning commission because at that time, there was a mix of minor edits and a lot of larger policy issues. When we took this to the city council, we, we brought forth, they had a copy of what the coastal commission had recommended as edits. And then we also brought forth what you have in your code this, today, within the blue edits of what we thought were non-policy issues that were agreeable to staff that could be incorporated into the document. So in your current draft, you have the minor edits and the larger policy issues have been removed. They, the edits that are in there do not fundamentally change any policies that exist and they're minor in nature. So with that, we were looking for discussion on the coastal commission edits. We didn't add a third color for coastal commission edits. We made them blue as staff changes because, so they're incorporated in with our own modifications. The majority of them are within the coastal chapter. One comment that we did receive from Commissioner Westman was to consistently utilize the terms, the term local coastal plan. Throughout the code, there's references to the local coastal plan and the local coastal act in reference. And our zoning code should relate back to the local coastal plan in most circumstances. So staff will go back and make sure that that is referenced correctly throughout.
So I wasn't sure what you were looking for in this section, whether it was just to review the edits or we were looking for policy?
No, we were just asking that you review the edits and if you're okay with the edits that have been incorporated at this time that are non-policy.
I didn't have any issues with what I read.
I, I gave them a couple of minor comments, but this was one I wanted to make certain that we, our obligation's the local coastal plan, not the coastal act.
And Commissioner Smith also sent me comments about defining passive and active recreation. That was also incorporated, so.
Okay. Well, good job.
Great. Okay, next is encroachments into setbacks. This starts on page 48-2. So I think I broke every rule that goes along a slide presentation in these next few slides. So I have not too much information in one slide. The handout of the remaining zoning code issues is actually probably the best reference for this discussion. So that starts on page 10 of the remaining zoning code issues. And within that red line, the changes that, that when we went through the code, we think should take place to create more consistency among what is allowed. So as we went through the, the draft with the planning commission and city council, a lot of different numbers came up in terms of what the appropriate setback for a different encroachment should be and different uses. When we looked at, we started to take the different themes. Some are like entertainment features such as fire pits and hot tubs and outdoor kitchens. We had a range of setbacks for those from two feet to 10 feet for a pizza oven. And so we said, well, there is an impact. It does create noise. So let's create a consistent setback of five feet, which is somewhere in the middle of the numbers that were suggested. So I'll go through the major topics, I guess, or the categories. And I'll stop at each of the tables. And you can let me know at that time if you would suggest edits to these tables. But the first category would be roof projections and wall projections. And typically, you allow these to extend into all your setbacks so that you can have some variety in the design of a wall plane and interest to a building and interest to your roof. So encroachments into the setbacks, this is shown in the table. And there were no changes suggested by staff.
Can I just clarify because my brain's not functioning? Interior side and exterior side is?
Okay.
On most houses, two interior sides.
Most houses have two interior sides. A corner when it faces the street is an exterior.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the other thing we caught in doing this exercise of putting it all on a table is in some instances, we would have the encroachment into the setback, but we didn't have a minimum distance from the property line. So now in going through this table exercise, we have both. So we, not only do we know how far you can encroach into the setback, but to main, to make sure that all cornices are three feet from the property line. So therefore, it wouldn't encroach right up to a property line. So are there any comments on roof projections or wall projections? No. Okay. And there were no changes by staff to this?
This is a good topic to bring up late in the meeting.
Thanks. Okay. Next is entryways. So typically, you know, in Capitola, there's a lot of talk of creating friendly entryways and allowing features in the front yard that are social features, I would say. So front porch, steps leading to it, flatwork, decorative features. So under the entry features, one change would be to not allow fire escapes in your front yards. Stairways, we actually have to, that needs to be updated because typically, you have a stairway that leads to a front porch, and that is not considered here. So we do need to add an allowance for stairways and to, to make sure that we allow for stairways, but then separate fire escapes. At grade flatwork, there was no maximum and no minimum so that you can have a walkway all the way to the sidewalk. Any edits to this table? No. Okay. Next is decorative features. So arbors, trellises, water features.
I think this is kind of a subject where we defer to the staff's expertise.
Except on landscape features such as a fountain, setting a five-foot minimum from a property line means that most of my neighbors can't have one. And I have a beautiful fountain that's three feet off of my property line, and it's wonderful. It doesn't bother anybody. So I wondered why staff wanted to implement a five-foot minimum there.
You know, there was no minimum previously from the property line. So that was in an effort to make sure there's an adequate setback, but.
But I don't think there should be for fountains because you have a lot of fountains that are, you know, it's like a wall fountain. And they're beautiful and they don't cause any problems for anybody.
What about three feet? Because you got to have a three-foot setback.
I see what you're saying.
The kind that I'm talking about can be built in as, as they're attached to the fence.
Yeah, I was actually looking at putting one on the, my rear fence which faces a railroad tracks, a water feature attached to it.
Yeah.
If it's built into it, I don't know if it's really a.
I think part of this may have come up because I was concerned about the term landscape features because I wanted to make certain we weren't talking about hedges or trees or, you know, anything like that.
I mean, you can't plant a tree next to your fence? You want a three-foot setback on it?
No, I don't want, you know, and it's like I, I use the example of like there's a hedge in front of a house on Riverview Avenue, you know, that's right up on the property line. It's like 10 feet tall. But that's sort of a historical feature that's been there forever. So I, I was concerned about the term landscape features.
I have some notes to clarify that one. I have a slide on that. But Commissioner Westman's suggestion, rather than landscape feature, was decorative ornamental features. And it would say up to a maximum height of six feet, which do not enclose the perimeter of a property excluding hedges, bushes, and living materials. To clarify that, you can have a hedge that's higher than six feet along the perimeter.
And you can have, I have, I planted three podacarpus trees right along my fence line that go up.
And you should be able to have them.
Okay, okay.
In my opinion.
Okay.
So there was one application, I think it was a year, year and a half ago, that would sort of fall within this. And we have a difficult time articulating what it would be. And that was the one on Depot Hill. I want to say Oakland. It was essentially central. It was essentially a seating bar area right on the property line. In fact, that one might have been in the right of way. But irrespective of that, it was, you know, do we want something that's kind of a, a feature where people are going to sit there right on the property line in the right of way? Or should there be a setback for something like that?
Maybe I'm thinking a different one. The one I'm thinking of was kind of a bar, but it was on the sideline property, but it was two feet inside the property line, which really it was, wasn't higher than the, to me, it was perfectly acceptable. I would hate to prevent someone from doing that type of thing. Now, being in the right of way is something, is a little bit different, but.
That was a fire pit request in the right of way.
That was, that was going to come up real soon. That was a fire pit and a concrete bench that was in the right of way.
And, you know, I don't know if the staff feels strongly about it, but I think playing devil's advocate, I could also imagine a neighbor having a problem with, you know, their next door neighbor putting a feature like that right on their side property line.
But this was below the fence line.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to, that's another landscape type feature that we had envisioned, you know, fountains, statues. A lot of that stuff, you know, it's probably fine to put on the property line. But if there's some activity involved with it, maybe we treat it differently.
Yeah, I really don't have an issue with it.
See, I'm comfortable with having fountains and statues right up on the property line. That doesn't bother me at all. I do hear, you know, if somebody was going to do something like, you know, and we've got pizza ovens and barbecues and all that covered.
That's in the next section.
That's in the next, entertainment features. So I guess I'm not really clear what this landscape feature is. So maybe it should just go away.
Maybe one way we could do it, and bear with me, I'm thinking out loud a little bit, is to allow these statues, fountains, other landscapy type features to encroach entirely into a setback up to the property line. And then roll in any of these other features that have some type of activity, human activity involved, that they do have to observe a minimum setback. So that, like that bar thing that I think we're both talking about, you know, they'd have to observe some minimum setback. I don't know what the magic number is.
I don't have a problem leaving a maximum height in there because I don't know if somebody wants to put something right on the property. No, we don't want to go there either. Okay. Then I think landscape, I think that last section should just go away.
The whole thing go away or just no max?
No max.
No min.
Minimum.
Well, I would just, if there's no max for anything, why do you have it there? Let people know they can do it, I guess.
Would be no minimum on the last.
I think you have, if you don't list it, then people are going to assume that they can do it. And I can't imagine it being a big problem.
It's, yeah.
Okay.
I can live with it either way. No minimum or take it away?
I think it's good to west it.
All right. So consensus is take it out. No minimum for landscape features. So entertainment features, that's a different story.
Did it used to be two feet and now we're changing it to five feet?
Hot tubs?
unspecified.
Hot tubs and outdoor kitchens, it was unspecified?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to the social backyard. Pools, hot tubs, fireplaces. This is one of the most common questions we get these days is where, where do I place my hot tub? Where can I put my fire pit? The designs are really nice. So it'll be good to have standards. So for this, the hot tub standard was at two feet for the rear in the original recommendation or the original draft. This, hot tubs, pools, fire pits, outdoor kitchens, they're all associated with noise. Pizza ovens, the original draft was a little bit higher. I think it was a 10-foot setback, but we tied it into outdoor kitchens within this table because there's not much of a difference between a barbecue and a pizza oven. So any requested modifications to the entertainment features?
Yeah, I, I can, well, you know, the thing is, is I could name property after property with the hot tubs and pools that our, our housing lots are just so small. Where do you put, where do you put these hot tubs? I mean, I think that's difficult. And I think you were talking about, hey, a backyard is a noise feature for kids. So I don't know the, a swing set against the back fence is a noise feature. So hot tubs, I'm not a big fan of saying it's going to be five feet. I think it just limits our people to have that option. And I don't know that it's any noisier than just a backyard. I get, I get the outdoor kitchen part of it. There's some things that go on there that, you know, with wiring and cooking and all that other stuff, maybe is a little bit different. But the.
Could you go back to the two feet, the way?
No, I think two feet is acceptable. Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, I think of some of these, you know, they make these little two-seat hot tubs. I've seen in the village, some of these areas that are just on top of a deck and a landing that's right up against it. So, you know, I hate to tell people they can't have a hot tub because of some setback. And I don't know that hot tubs are any, cause any more unfriendly noise to neighbors than anyone else.
From experience, I can tell you that they can be controversial depending on the relationships with neighbors. Where if you have younger people using a jacuzzi late at night, drinking, I've had a couple of really touchless cases that drive me crazy with hot tubs.
Five feet, two feet isn't good.
Yeah, understood.
And that backyard could be that way.
And if it's two, I was having a conversation with one of our council members over this one. And two feet, five feet, it's not going to make a difference on the noise unless, unless we want to try and regulate some kind of containment. When, when we had a hot tub in a condominium where it was right on the corner, we just got a gazebo. We closed it so that way it's, it's fine. If there are noise problems, maybe.
Can't have a gazebo feature within that, close to the property line.
You, you could have a screened hot tub at two feet and a hot tub at five feet. But that, I mean, that's, you could require screening.
Oh, oh.
For it to be close to the property. But most people are going to have a fence.
So is it two feet just for hot tubs or everything in this table?
Yeah, I was going to ask that question because if, you know, if two feet applies to hot tubs, well, why not to everything else in here? Seems like to me the issues are the same. It's, it's really about noise. Now, I don't know, pool may be a little different because of excavation, if it's a below-ground pool.
Kitchens and fire pits are different because they have.
Fire pits.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the kitchens and the fire pits and stuff from a building official's standpoint are supposed to be three feet. If there's structure, vents, anything there.
Three feet? Why not make it all three feet then?
I don't, I don't understand the requirement really to have it all consistent and the same. Are there different concerns really?
Well, I just, you know, the noise issue between neighbors, you know?
But I do think, I think pools are a different story. If someone's going to have an in-ground pool, requiring those to be five feet from the property line is not, and I also think for the fire pits or the kitchen, you know, having those be five feet away is also fine. So for me, if we could just change the first one back to two and then leave the other three at five, I would be comfortable with that.
I agree with that.
I agree.
All right. That's good.
Okay. Okay, next is other structures and equipment. This includes children's play equipment, rain harvest barrels, screen mechanical equipment. There we do use the word screen to make sure it is screened. And these are all just different based on, so a, a screen mechanical equipment would not be allowed in the front yard. Actually, none of these would be, actually, just the rain harvest would not be allowed in the front yard and the screen mechanical in the front yard. And then there's no max for rear and interior sides. And the only one that's not allowed in the exterior side, again, is that screen mechanical because you wouldn't want to see it along the street, a big air conditioning unit on the outside. It should be in the interior.
Do you ever enforce the front yard, it's not allowed, right? Play equipment and so forth in the front yard? Am I reading that correctly?
It is allowed. No.
Oh, it is allowed.
Yeah. So the first thing, the children's play equipment, the doghouse, the movable trash enclosure, those would all be allowed in the front rear side. And it can go right up to the property line.
Why does it say no max?
Um, no maximum.
Encroachment. If you encroach as much as it wants.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so it's...
Yeah, I don't have any problems with those.
Anybody have any issues with that?
I don't have any issues with that.
Seven B.
Okay, seven B I added just in case there were questions that came up about accessory units and how, where they're located on the property. So didn't have any issues there or any red lines to make, just wanted to have it available in case questions came up.
So I had, I had one issue, being the strange person that I am and having worked in planning for like 30-something years. These, these are accessory structures, no, these are accessory structures and garages, so I'll wait. Mine's accessory dwelling units.
And I think I have the non-conforming. I have a slide for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Nothing on seven B?
Nope. Okay, moving on to accessory dwelling units. So during our code update, there was new legislation that passed within AV 2299, which required us to go back and re, essentially take what we had the direction on and then revamp it so that it complies with the state legislation. Some of the major changes are the terminology, so what we called a secondary dwelling unit is now an accessory dwelling unit. There are new definitions included in the chapter. It was, the red lines were very thorough, so we just accepted all the changes for this draft, not to throw you off with a very long chapter that's all crossed out. There are new standards for attached, detached and internally, internal dwelling units. There's also new parking allowances. Most of those, there's one for if you have a bus that comes by within a quarter mile of the property every 15 minutes. And that wouldn't have, we checked with the bus schedule and there's no place in Capitola that has a bus schedule that comes by every 15 minutes.
They get through the village in 15 minutes?
But there are new parking allowances and waivers. And then also the increased minimum size went up. So our regulations of maintaining these that, I think, the max you could go up to based on your lot size was 800 square feet and now the new is up to 1,200 square feet. So that, that's the big change within the draft code. With that, I don't know if there are specific questions you have. If you'd like, I can bring this one back with an in-depth presentation. I just created a brief overview in the slide of the major changes in it, but I'd be happy to bring that.
I think maybe we should because especially that last change, it seems very significant to me in the context of Capitola and the parking requirements for 1,200 square foot ADU unit in some of the areas we have here. This could be big.
Do, do we have a say in it? I mean, this is something that, yeah, something that was, this is state.
Yeah, we did work pretty closely with the city attorney on this chapter because candidly, the legislation is not well-written. There's some provisions in it that I'm not entirely sure how we're going to apply. And even if you talk to Cala Lega cities, they, they opposed it for a lot of those very reasons. They, they don't have good answers either. So it's far from ideal, but it is, it's codified in state law now.
And I think what we should do is look at and see if there's some flexibility as far as requirements that we can add that protect our community.
We can certainly come back, give a more thorough, detailed presentation on what the new state law is and how we address it.
That'd be good.
One, one concern that I have, and I, I don't know how you deal with this issue, but, you know, we allow accessory dwelling units. We give you a higher floor area ratio. We reduce the setbacks that buildings need to be at because, you know, we want to encourage them to happen. But there's nothing in our regulation that requires that they continue to be used as secondary dwelling units. So someone could buy a property that had a secondary dwelling unit or have a property that they wanted to build on and they couldn't quite build as big a house as they wanted on it. They could build a secondary dwelling unit, have the main house and occupy the whole thing themselves. So I was...
I like the way she thinks.
I mean, I, I've seen people do amazing things. So I, I think we should have in our ordinance something that says, if we give you all these exceptions for this to be a secondary dwelling unit, it should continue to be a secondary dwelling unit, not become an addition to your house.
I think the county has a recorded agreement that addresses the use.
I don't think the Capitola does.
No, we don't. We do currently require a recorded instrument to require that the owner live in either the second unit or the primary. That, that has gone from the update. And that they can't be sold, they can't violate the State MAP Act. And I think there's another one, but that would be something we could easily put in there that it shall not be converted or attached to the primary structure.
That's a good point. It should be part of our discussion. I think this is a topic that's worthy of some time.
The biggest deterrent is a water meter, so.
Well, that's gone away, the new law, they can't charge for...
Well, it only applies to cities and counties, so it does not apply to SoCal Creek Water District 'cause they are neither a city or county. So I don't know if that was lobbied into the legislation or an oversight, but...
So you would still have to have an additional meter in SoCal Water District?
No, if you're getting water from Santa Cruz, City Water Department, they can't charge. So at 41st Avenue, you're good. If you're on the side of the creek, you need to pay.
Yeah, interesting.
So anyway, this, this one's gonna come back.
Yeah, we're gonna deal with that in the next meeting. So, do we need to discuss scheduling?
I've got one more item and then...
And I have two.
Okay.
And then I have actually slides of discussion.
So we're not done yet.
Not done.
We're not quite done.
I know you wanna get out.
No, I was just at the end of my pages.
Okay, if we go to page 92-6 in the code, non-conforming structures, there's a table that has been updated.
I'll be mostly Capitola.
So when, we brought this, this table in front of the city council, but it was very, they brought up to staff that this just needs to be put into plain English, make it clear, all the references to structural, does that really matter if it's structural or not structural? And as we worked through it, it's very confusing to just read the table and not have an example there. So we also added the example column, so it's a little more clear of exactly in which scenarios a permit would be required. So within this table, we're looking for feedback on have we made it clear enough? Commissioner Westman had suggested that under permit required, that we should add an additional note that building, that additional permits may be required for other departments as well, you know, that aren't identified in this. So we'll add that within, we can update note, note one to also include, you know, it may require other planning permits or other departments. But any other suggestions on this table?
So I just had one question. When you're talking about exterior repairs and modifications that alter or affect a non-conforming aspect, I thought I had this down until I read the example of rebuilding an existing building wall within a required setback area with no increase in floor area. So if you have a damaged wall, termites got it. And you need to replace or repair that wall, you need a design permit to do that? You shouldn't. I was thinking you should just remove repairs from the, those two items, the third and fourth item down. Because you're adding floor area, you're not repairing something. But if you're, if you've got termite damage and you need to repair a wall.
So is that number two?
This is the third one down, exterior repairs and modifications. So the idea here was that if it's an exterior repair and it's not in the non-conforming area, it wouldn't require a permit.
Right.
If it's an exterior wall that, we'll say it's a wall that's one foot off the property line, that was something that, in getting rid of the 80% calculation, it was something that the planning commission, we had discussed and said, this may or may not have an impact on the neighbor, so it'd be good for it to come in front of us. And if we can make findings that there's no impact of this non-conforming place, then may, then we have the ability to allow it to be rebuilt in place in that non-conforming. But if, in that situation, if you had termites and they were gonna remove this wall that's one foot off the property line, that's been a burden on a neighbor for years and it really at that point should come into conformance, the planning commission has the ability to review it within that design permit and see, is there an impact to neighbors? If not, with a design permit, you're allowed to issue the design permit. But at least there's a level of review to ensure that that non-conformity does not have impacts. And I believe there's criteria that, for findings that need to be made. So under the, on page 92-9, the findings for planning commission approval of a design permit, the second one is the non-conforming user structure has not resulted in a notable negative impact or nuisance on a neighboring property or to the surrounding area. So this was drafted with the intent that it comes back to planning commission. If there's no impacts, then it, we can, you can approve the, the design permit. But in that case where there has been impacts, you wouldn't be able to make the findings and therefore they'd have to, they couldn't rebuild the non-conformity in its place. They would have to comply with setbacks.
But it says finding for modifications. Are you really modifying it for replacing boards that are...
I'm suggesting...
Yes, you're saying yes?
You should be able to repair it, not modify it.
I think I hear what you're saying and I, I think I share your concern in terms of what does that mean? Is it, you know, coming in and doing very minor work, what's the threshold for that? And I, if that's what you're saying, I, I think I hear you loud and clear and share your concern.
And I don't know if you changed the word from repair, but I know that I have a house, for example, that is non-conforming in, I believe, its floor area ratio because what was okay back when it was built is bigger than what you could build on the same size lot today. So I know I'm a non-conforming. And when we did a remodel, we went through an extensive process of design review and public hearings and all that stuff, and it was time-consuming as it was extremely expensive. And we have termites and we plan to live there for a long time. I know I'm gonna be replacing siding and doing repair work on the outside of my house. And I don't know how you would define at what point it's non-conforming. And going, having to go through the design review process to repair something that's already non-conforming, I just...
I'm not following.
But number two says exterior repair, yeah.
I think you're misreading it. The second box would cover what you wanna do and there's no...
No.
The third one says, the example is rebuilding an existing building wall within a required setback.
So I'd like to clarify two things. So note two, so after the third one down, note two is repairs or replacements of exterior finishes such as a roof or exterior siding are allowed without a design permit. So that, that's clear within the note. And then also that second criteria, as long as they do not alter or affect the non-conforming aspect.
I think her point is that the example for the third box kind of isn't consistent with the third box. And that's why she is thinking that repairing her wall would require a design permit, whereas the second box is the one that really controls that.
I think the third example is to completely rebuild and maybe we need to change the terminology to a complete.
Right.
Rebuild, yeah, to tear down and rebuild.
Just, yeah, change that to make sure that it doesn't sort of conflict or overlap with the second box there.
Right, 'cause they're not repairing it, they're rebuilding.
Demolishing and rebuilding. So we'll, we'll make it very clear that that's a demolish and rebuild.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause it's just the repairs and the example together that got me.
Anyone else?
Oh, I, I, I had one. I would just recommend the examples are the very last one concerning the recreation of a, you know, involuntary damage or destroyed structure in the example. I assume that, that means that it has to be to the very same exact pre-destruction specifications, okay? And then in that case, no permit is required. But a lot of times people use that as an opportunity to make some modifications, to make some changes, you know. So I think providing some, I think, clarity about those circumstances.
I think that's a good point. They would, they would still need a permit, but to, to change something that's a non-conformity within that overall project when trigger an additional permit requirement, I, I don't think it's really clear either.
Well, right, just so they, I mean, they can say, well, I'm making it match what was destroyed. I'm just adding this additional room. So making sure that people are, know upfront what exactly that...
And I think it should be more than just destroyed by fire. It could be earthquake. It could be flood, it could be...
So I'll, on the next page 92-8, under D, involuntary damage or destruct, destruction, it does go into the detail of non-conforming structures damaged or destroyed by earthquake, fire, flood. And then it also, under reconstruction, there is an allowance for deviation from existing design details such as arrangement of doors and windows, materials and color may be permitted. Exact reconstruction may not be possible due to availability. So this one, that was built into, and I think in the, when you, the allowance to recreate, reconstruct a single-family dwelling, there was also minor deviations allowed to that as well, so.
So we may wanna reference that section in the involuntary damage so that that's clear.
Yes.
That was wise, wise to put it involuntary damage.
I think we'll work on this a bit and present it to you again.
Good.
Thank you.
You next.
Okay, the first item that came up was the accessory dwelling units. We just spoke about this and to add, a requirement for not allowing them to convert back. This, we also discussed the asset, the active and passive recreational facilities. We're gonna add a definition. Commissioner Smith brought that up, so we'll make sure to get that in for coastal. Page 36-6, this is job opportunities for all. The criteria we continue to work on, so. This has been changed, so new, this is one of the incentives. And the, the standard is newer and large businesses that increase the diversity of jobs available to Capitola residents. Types of jobs may include jobs that improve environmental quality or reduce energy or resource consumption, green jobs, high-tech sector jobs and jobs in industries focusing on the generation or utilization of intellectual property, the creative jobs. So we're trying to massage that one a little more and Commissioner Smith asked this to be brought forth as a discussion item.
And I just wanted to make sure that everybody's okay with increasing the diversity and not the supply. Because originally when we were, when we talked about it, it was, you know, bringing jobs to town. And now it's not bringing more jobs, it's bringing certain types of jobs.
Yeah, I thought I should, go ahead.
I thought we were dealing with that anomaly of bringing jobs for all income levels so that we were looking for hedge fund managers.
There you go, you need some of those.
I don't think you wanna limit the supply or the kinds of jobs.
No, but this is in the section, if I'm not mistaken, for additional benefits. So we, we're offering them, we're offering them benefits if they bring in these types of jobs.
But if someone was gonna bring in 100 new great jobs, I think that, that's something that we would wanna consider. I think it's important for the people of Santa Cruz County to have job opportunities.
So maybe we could say supply.
And/or.
We could work something in there, a bit fluffy about significant economic effect.
Just give them a special bonus if they bring in these types of jobs.
Bringing these types of jobs, more jobs, I mean, some guy that wants to bring in 100 extra jobs shouldn't not get the benefits because they're an existing type. a hundred extra jobs shouldn't not get the benefits because they're an existing type and they're not a new type.
Increase the supply and diversity of jobs, I mean, put them both in there.
Fluff.
And/or diversity.
Also, the...to H-ten of that section, and/or recreational amenities was added. So, publicly accessible parks, open space, and/or recreational amenities beyond the minimum required by the city or other public. So, I just...that's brought up. Okay, we'll go to page forty-six and this is the affordable housing overlay and the under assurance of affordability during city council review. I think the intent here was to ensure that the affordability continues on for not only fifty-five years, but a longer duration. And terminology that's used in our housing element is for the natural life of the unit. So, they asked us to copy that and in talking with Commissioner Westman, there's concern that now we've removed the minimum, which...
I mean, what is the natural life of the unit? If it's been there for thirty years and it has major termite damage and the roof is leaking and somebody's going to have to, you know, spend a lot of money to repair them, has the natural life run out at that point? I think it should be a number of years. It can be, you know, fifty-five is a standard that's used, I think, widely throughout the state, but you could make it a little higher than that if you wanted to. But I just think this definition, the natural life of the unit, is pretty vague.
Would be said for fifty-five years or the natural life of the unit, whichever is greater.
Yeah, I could go along with that. I think that's good.
I'm sorry.
So, Commissioner Smith said for, you know, fifty-five years or the natural life of the unit, whichever is greater.
I don't think that quite works because if the building is no longer functional in twenty-five years, restricted for thirty more.
I believe that in housing projects which receive federal funding and money from the state from housing and community development, there is a requirement for the fifty-five years. I mean...
Yeah, I don't know if it's exactly fifty-five years. There is long-term affordability requirements if you use state or federal funding. That's a common requirement. The distinction here is the affordable housing overlay potentially could be developed without any state or federal monies.
Right.
But I would think most developers would try to bring some of that into the equation, but...so, I think this is probably a city council policy decision back in the day. Fifty-five years is in the code. I don't know that I feel strongly one way or another about what that term is and I don't know what the magic number of it's thirty years, fifty, a hundred.
Well, I mean, I like Linda's suggestion that it be, you know, the greater of fifty-five or the natural life of the unit. And to your concern, Ed, I assume that, you know, the pride of ownership is going to help maintain these units in habitable condition. And I guess if they aren't, they become even more affordable, so.
But if you have somebody who builds affordable housing and they build it really cheaply and it falls down in twenty years, you want them to build back affordable housing. You don't want them to then have that land and we lose affordable housing because they didn't take care of it.
Yeah, now you're having difficulty.
I don't care. I don't care. The original affordable housing ordinance in Capitola was ten years.
Sorry.
I think way back when the conversion, the first conversion. So, I mean, I don't mind.
I can live with that. If they're not receiving a benefit for the affordable housing unit, then I don't know why we would tie them to a...I like the part where it just talks about mortgage financing programs, mortgage insurance, state law, housing grant program or subsidy. So, if they're receiving some benefit for building that, but if it's a property owner building affordable housing and he changes his mind in twenty years, I hate to tie their hands.
Right, but we're not doing that. It'll only be if they got a density bonus for building affordable housing or something like that.
If it's no benefit, yeah.
You want to build an apartment building and rent it, that's your business. This doesn't regulate that.
And under this chapter, that they would receive a benefit. They could increase density and that's the requirement is they provide affordable housing for a certain duration.
Okay. So, the correction will be fifty-five years or the natural life of the unit, whichever is greater. Okay, page forty-eight-five, this is...oh, we discussed this. This is that decorative landscape. Moving on, this is the setback. Page seventy-six-nineteen, shade trees. There's a requirement during city council review, the shade trees, the requirement was a twenty-four inch box and that was increased at the request of one of the council members to a thirty-six inch box. And Commissioner Westman had concerns about the health of a larger tree.
I mean, I'm not an arborist, but I've always been told by people who are that, you know, a lot of cities require twenty-four inch box trees and those trees do fine. They would say that if you planted a fifteen-gallon tree and a twenty-four inch box tree in five years, they would be the same size. But that when you went over a twenty-four inch, the trees typically were stunted because they had been...they were a larger tree in the box, so you ended up not getting, you know, anything for the bigger requirement for the thirty-six inch over the twenty-four and they're very expensive. You're putting a huge burden on somebody. So, I wanted to suggest that we go back to the twenty-four inch box size because I think that's more than adequate.
I could totally live with that.
Yeah, I can live with that.
Anyone disagree with that? Okay.
Okay. Next, page eighty-seventeen, this is the...in the sign code, there's an allowance for regulations for internally illuminated signs. They're prohibited in the mixed-use village. The code allows them in the mixed-use neighborhood and the discussion is should they be prohibited in the mixed-use neighborhood as well? So, that's going up Capitola Avenue and across Capitola Road.
And I thought we had discussed this and we decided not to have them in the mixed-use neighborhoods.
Only when a portion of the sign that appears illuminated is the lettering, the trademark or the logo. No large panel internally...so, what is the name of that real estate firm?
Yeah, that's the...there's only two that I know of that are there. That one real estate sign, which I think, you know, created a fair amount of controversy and neighbors being upset about that sign going in. And there's one other one which is across the street from it at the church there. Those are the only two that we currently have in the...what's going to be the mixed-use neighborhood district. And for me, I just, you know, everything's so close, so narrow. We're talking about it being residential, commercial, being in a lot of it residential. I just didn't see the need for having illuminated signs.
I think I would agree with that. It seems to me the same reason why we would prohibit them in MUV is...would apply as equally, maybe if not more, in MUN, so I think we should prohibit them. Maybe the two existing ones, they get grandfathered in, so.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
I'm glad I'm in a fight.
Great.
Okay, the next is the same page, eighty-seventeen, and this is...it's a section of code that carries over from the existing code. It's on residential signs. We have allowances within our signs that are not regulated for smaller signs that are found on residence such as beware of dogs and any warning signs that they would need. We also have allowances under temporary signs for garage sale signs. So, in reading this section of code, we couldn't...it was, well, what does this pertain to? What type of sign? And it doesn't really make sense to have a section on residential signs. It is from our old code. It's existed. The one portion that we do regulate that's been a topic of conversation is the home occupation and vacation rentals, but that also is expressly allowed under the signs that don't require a permit, so that standard is elsewhere in this chapter. So, the suggestion here was to remove this section of code seventeen-eighty-one-hundred for residential signs and know that it's covered within other sections for signs that do not require a permit and prohibited signs, so.
Yeah, so I see they changed the vacation rental to eight and a half by eleven, which seems awful small for me for our vacation home rental, but...
I can give you more of an overview on that. The...they put a sunset on it for...so, they'll be allowed for one year after the code is adopted. There's a...I think it's beach house rentals that does the majority of signs and they recently did get new signs that are one square foot. So, they're aware of the situation. They weren't too happy in support of this minor change, but it was discussed at council and at a couple meetings.
It just seems one square foot, I mean, talking about inches here with the standard that they're already used to, to me it just seems like a...I don't know.
I think the goal was in the long run to get these a little bit smaller.
What's that?
The goal was over time to get them just a little bit smaller from a square foot to...
Well, it's already difficult enough to read when you get my age and so, hey, whatever.
One of the feelings was that we have so many rental and vacation rental places going up in residential areas that there's a concern by some council members that it's degrading the neighborhoods. If you drive through and there's just signs, signs, signs everywhere that...
TRO area, you mean like...because I'm just thinking of the vacation rental overlay area, the transit...
Well, there's that area, but then there are also longer-than-thirty-day vacation rentals all over the place.
The longer-than-thirty-day rentals on Depot Hill are hidden inside some, you know, one of those programs online to go rent it because they're trying to hide their true rental system there, but...
I know in the jewel box, we have a lot of beach house rentals, houses.
Yeah.
And they don't rent them for less than thirty days. They're not that kind of a nuisance, but they do have the big sign out front.
Well, big twelve-by-twelve-by-eight-and-a-half-by-eleven, I mean, we're talking about...yeah, I don't know. Again, it's something obviously they beat up already, so what it is, it is what it is, but we sure enjoy the taxes we get from the rental overlay area, so I'd like to see them rented.
And I just want to clarify, is one foot...is it one square foot? Is that one foot by one foot? So, a three-square-foot sign in the village for a menu sign is three feet by three feet? Okay, I've always...
Oh, no, three square foot is three by one or eighteen inches by...
Yeah.
Twenty-four.
Three by three is not a square feet.
Yeah, that's right. Like we saw tonight, that was a three square foot.
Okay.
Next. Okay, so there's consensus to remove the single-family residential sign.
Yes.
We'll keep the multifamily in there because that is relevant. Okay. Oh, next, so today you received letters from the auto dealerships regarding signs. I met with them recently and went over the new code regulations and in that meeting there was concern about the maximum of a hundred square feet. One reason within the sign code, one area that you're not allowed to modify for the allowed modifications by planning commission is maximum sign area. So, within the one hundred square foot max, Toyota would be...is currently three times that, they're at two-hundred-and-ninety-five square feet. Subaru's not as high. I'm sorry, I don't have the number for Subaru for you this evening, but there was the maximum square footage. One suggestion I could make is that any signs above a certain square footage come to planning commission rather than putting a definite number, a definitive number for...just to require that they require planning commission review above a certain square footage and then you can decide depending on the size of the building and the frontage. That was one...
That works for me.
Does that work?
I don't think that would apply too much of a hardship to them because it usually comes in with some other big development.
Yeah, we approved that one, so.
Okay. The second was concern was that under the temporary sign standards, so that's on page eighty-nine nineteen, the table, in the first row, it talks about the auto dealership sign, so it allows flags, pennants and balloons. And for the...at the very end of it, for the maximum duration, it says thirty continuous calendar days, no more than one-hundred-and-twenty days per calendar year. And currently they keep the flags on top of the poles up year-round and their request was, I think there were two different ones. Subaru had asked that they just ensure that they be maintained in good order and Toyota offered the suggestion of that they be replaced on an annual...a requirement that they be replaced annually. So, those were...so that they would like to see them be allowed year-round.
I don't mind having them year-round. I mean, I think that that auto dealership doesn't really...isn't visible to many people. So, I could live with them being year-round and I could live with them being, you know, in good order or something, not requiring that they be placed every year because you don't want to have to go out there and say, it's been three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, you need new signs.
Yeah, and we're talking flags, pennants and balloons, right? So, balloons, you don't want them to have for a whole year and then replace them. You want to make sure they maintain them for whatever use they have, right?
I agree.
Next is page ninety-two-three and this was a discussion request from Commissioner Westman on the extension will not impair coastal resources. I believe this was with nonconforming. If you'd like to speak to that.
Well, that's something that I would like to have removed because, first of all, I think, again, it's vague. What does it mean, the extension will not impair coastal resources? I think an example could be the Crest Apartments. The city granted them an extension, so those apartments could stay there and I could see where someone at the coastal commission would say, oh, no, that impairs coastal resources because, you know, it's right up on the bluff, it's visual blight, it's all of those. So, I would simply like to have this removed.
This is the coastal commission edit?
Yes.
Although that's probably the only time I'd ever agree with the coastal commission is the example you gave, but...
I know.
I'm totally on board with removing it.
For me, I think those are decisions the city of Capitola should make.
Was this a change that the coastal commission is insisting on?
It was from their initial feedback of the draft.
I mean, the point is, it's so vague and I didn't know what that means.
When we submit the changes, we can leave this change out and then if they really want it, we'll find out how badly.
And I'm happy when I said I'd be happy with that. I wasn't going to die on that deal, but I just get so mad that they want to regulate so much of what Capitola does.
Katie, were you going to go through the staff revisions that you included in the packet?
No. Are there certain ones that you'd like us to present?
The question about... The question about vehicle sales display room being limited to five thousand square feet, I was, that was just my question.
I thought.
Where did five thousand square feet come from, and does it make sense or not?
So it was a smaller number that you could typically find in a multi-tenant building, such as like the mall could have, incorporate one of these within one of their spaces. Or, but I was actually going to make some phone calls for you regarding that and see what, what is the square footage of the buildings that Tesla is in currently? That is an example. So I can bring that back to you to make sure. But it, it looks like from the ones that I've seen, like Santana Row and there's one at the Stanford Mall, they seem to fit right into existing tenant spaces and with one or two cars. So there's.
Yeah, and that was just my question. I don't want to limit them to five thousand square feet without even thinking about how many cars that means and would it make sense? Because we love Tesla to have a showroom in the mall. That would be awesome.
I also brought this up to the Toyota and Subaru dealership when they came in, and they thought it was great, and they didn't think the five-thousand-square-foot limitation, they thought that was plenty.
Okay.
So that was their feedback.
Even get McLaren there, it's a little better.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, so just to go over the process, again, planning commission, once you have the complete review of the pending issues, so I'm going to bring back the secondary units at our next regular planning commission meeting. I'll put that on as a presentation. And then after that, we'll be asking for a recommendation to initiate the public review. And that would be a recommendation to the city council. Next, the city council will review it with your added changes. And then they will give us direction to initiate public review. And at that point, we'll publish the updated zoning code for sixty days for public review. And then we'll schedule a hearing for the planning commission for public comments, suggested revisions, and to make a recommendation to the city council, followed by city council reviewing the public comment, suggested revisions, and then adoption. And from there, it would go on to the coastal commission. So that's that. The additional meetings we requested in March did not work, except for the last Thursday of the month. And at this point, it doesn't seem like we'll need that extra special meeting. So I'll just, I'll bring the secondary units to you at the next planning commission as a presentation to go over with the state regulations. Yep. And if you'd like, we could start that meeting early at six for us.
Let's see how many regular items we have on the agenda. If it's like tonight, there's no need to start early, but if we have a lot of items, we can.
I believe there's about four items or five.
Let's see what they like, consent or.
Okay, yeah, we'll look at that.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to continue to the next hearing then?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It takes the director's report.
No report this evening, thank you.
No report. Commission communications.
None.
We stand adjourned to the March meeting.
Thank you all. We're almost done.